Good evening. I'd like to call the Planning Commission of Northumberland County, Virginia, to order at this time. And Stuart, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Chris Crowley.
Here.
Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Cost.
Here.
Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Garfield Parker.
Here.
Alan Garland.
Here.
Roger McKinley.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
Heidi Wilkins-Cory.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Would someone like to do the invocation tonight? Okay. Hi. If you would.
Does someone volunteer me or something?
Yes. Well done.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and we thank you for your grace. We thank you for allowing us to come together once again to do the business of the county. We ask for your guidance and direction. In your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Garland, would you lead us in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good job. Missy did. Keep loaded up.
She didn't have much choice.
Could we have an approval for tonight's agenda?
Move adoption of the agenda for tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from our September 19th meeting?
I'm going to be accepted. I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who was the first person?
Patrick.
Patrick.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Do any commissioners have anything they'd like to say before we start tonight? Any commissioners that could have anything to say? Okay, all right. A few months ago, there was an article in one of the papers that said that Northumberland County was one of the fastest growing counties in the region. And if you've taken a look at the traffic patterns the last few days or the last few weeks, you'll note that there is a huge onslaught of vehicles in Northumberland County. And I just wanted the commission to be aware, with more people comes more changes, more opportunities are not. It depends on where they are. So I would ask that we be diligent in just looking at that fact that we are growing. For years, we didn't grow at all, but now we are growing. We have people that we don't know, or just, they're just here. So as we are planning and talking about this, please be considerate to know that there are a lot of people in Northumberland at this time. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, the Census Bureau from 20, from the last census show, we were actually shrinking. I think what's actually happening is more people who have property are spending more time here because of quality of life.
Yeah.
Because if they're moving here, there's no place for them to move. Nobody's building homes in any quantity. So I think it's just people are showing up. They're realizing the heaven we have here, so let's keep it.
Okay. Okay. All right. Stuart, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, the board discussed the Planning Commission hearing conditional use project, applications before the board hears. So basically, they'll come to us first and then go to the planning, to the Board of Supervisors. So we have to adjust our fee schedule because by doing that, we have to advertise two more weeks. So it'll be a total of a month of advertising, and newspaper advertising is very expensive. So we have to adjust our fee schedule so that we don't lose money on advertising. But in the future, we will start hearing conditional use permits before the board does.
Okay.
And we'll be recommending to the board whether that conditional use should be approved or not approved. But just wanted to give you a heads up, that's coming to us. And once we get the fee schedule in and the board determines when that will start, we will be hearing that. So probably gonna get more busy than less busy.
So the fact that it's starting here instead of the Board of Supervisors, does that mean that they're gonna have to advertise twice instead of once?
We have to, two, yes, sir.
Why do you, is that necessary?
And for every public hearing, you must advertise two weeks before the meeting. Two weeks before the actual week of the meeting. You can't advertise the same week. You have to advertise two weeks before. But yes, sir, that's part of Virginia's state code.
So the Planning Commission is required to advertise as well as Board Supervisors?
Correct.
Seems like.
Would it make any sense to adjust the fee schedule now to encompass conditional use permits?
That's what the board's gonna be working on.
Okay. Yes?
What was the thinking behind that? I'm just curious what the conversation's been on that.
I think that's what state code says it's supposed to have.
Okay. Good answer.
With, on advice of council, that's what I understand, is the board, with on advice of council, decided to start doing that.
Well, previous to now, the Board of Supervisors was advertising for a public hearing, is that right?
Correct.
And then it was coming back here, and we're having a public hearing here as well?
That was, that was when this all came to a head with regards to the Solar 2232 review, that basically, the Planning Commission has to determine, and that's what the Planning Commission does, determines if a project is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan.
So we should've been doing it all along. We, they were not being charged for a public hearing fee.
Well, they were. It was a smaller fee because it was only one advertisement session. So yes, we probably should've been doing it all along, but we're correcting it now.
Okay.
And y'all will be the first to know when we start doing that.
Is there any move away from advertising in the newspapers with circulation shrinking?
I think state code says you need to advertise in a newspaper, a local newspaper of local circulation. I think that's what the state code says.
Okay.
But we, we, it's also on, when I send the ad out, it's posted to the webpage. So, but you have to go to the webpage and look under calendar and see that.
Yes, sir.
But it is published on the webpage when I send the advertisement to the newspapers. You got it?
All right.
And so you'll, you'll see probably an advertisement for a public hearing on permits fee schedule adjustments coming up. So that's why we wanted to let you all know that it's coming.
All right. So happy to see so many of you here tonight from the public. This is our time for citizens' comments. Nothing, it's up to you. Would you like to have something to say before we start? Yes. Yes. Name and address as well, please.
Pamela Hagie at Shep's Point Drive in Reedville. I have been reading in the paper about no-wake zones, and I appeared before the Board of Supervisors last, not the last meeting, the meeting before. And I'm starting to think that it would be good for the county to start to look at our riverways and creeks the same way you're looking at roads, because they are roads and they have vehicles on them. And one of the things I had brought up was my concern when an industry was expanding, an oyster industry, and they already have lights that are going into my neighbor's windows, so they don't need a light at night. As it stands now, if you live across the river, and I live on a narrow part of the river, you don't need to be notified about that. And so we didn't know that expanding a building was gonna entail having these very bright lights on them facing the river. So my request would be to start considering notifying people across the way from places like this, like when you put through the restaurant that was gonna have the boats coming in and out, and they need lighting on that. That affects people across the river. So I've always looked at, when I sit on my porch, I always see the road. There are workboats that use that road. There are watermen that use that road. And there are people recreating that use that road. And there's safety rules for all those boats. So I just think maybe we need a few considerations for the people living along there on the road, and also start considering a little more about some of those safety areas, the no-wake zones, like one of the oystermen had asked for near the pier where they load and unload, they wanted a no-wake zone for the safety of the workers. And I noticed in the paper someone else had asked for one because it's a narrow part of their creek or river. So I don't know what you would have to do to start tossing that in and thinking about that, because we are getting more crowded. There's more and more people every summer. Some are not so good about using their vehicles, in my opinion, from what I see. They get a little crazy, they're having a good time. And so I know VMRC, the Marine Police, have limitations. So whatever we do, it's, we may want to talk with them, because enforcement of that can be a problem. And I don't mean to put more on Philip Marston about notifying more people, but it is a concern when you're on narrow parts of the river and you have an industry across from you. It's like having the dollar store on the road and putting up a big bright sign and it's suddenly shining in your bedroom window. So I think it's important that we all consider the neighborhood.
Ma'am, excuse me. You're requesting two things, or for us to look at two things. One is lighting shining in your window, and the other one is wake. Is that right?
Well, it's, it's under the general shell of starting to look at the rivers more like the roads that they really are, how they're used. And yes, so, so when things happen on the land that affect people on the other side of that, or along the shores of it, it's, I think it's important to, people are, you know, notified when there's industry moving into their area on both sides of the river, not just the adjacent properties.
Is this, the lighting on the boats, I'm not sure.
It's not, it's not on the boats, it's on a building.
It's on dock, on the dock or on a building?
It's actually, it's a, it's a two to three-story building, and the lights are on top, and they're security lights.
Is this down by the airfield somewhere in that area?
No, it's, it's the Cockrells' operation. So, you know, and he's expanding, and hooray for him, I think that's great. The problem is the, the lighting, you know? It's, we wrote a letter to the Board of Supervisors and brought this up because they were gonna be putting more lighting over there, and we weren't sure if that was gonna affect us. But I'm, I'm talking with Philip now, and he's negotiating with Miles now about that lighting.
But, you know, sometimes if you go to the owner, and justify, I think, and ask them if they can put a shield so it doesn't, it blocks it off from going on your property. Because I know going down Reedville, there's a, there's a light that always bothered me that when you're driving down there, it, the light is real bright shining right in the traffic.
Yeah.
And if it were, just, it wouldn't take much but a little shield to go over it, it would still satisfy their need for having the light there, and you wouldn't have to have that bright light you're approaching. So I don't know. Have you talked to Miles about that?
Miles and I really don't get along that well, but yes, I did talk to him about it, and he told me no. Outright no. So, so that's why I'm asking Philip for some help. But I think that, you know, I live on a working waterfront, and there's all kinds of stuff going on, and it's fine. It's where I chose to live. This was more of the newer operation. It's with someone who doesn't really care about the neighbors as much, maybe, I don't know. But I just feel like we're a neighborhood, and so if we have something, and I'm just not talking about mine, hopefully the oyster industry is gonna keep taking off. So you can set a standard for how people are notified when someone wants to start up an oyster operation, and how that should look so that it doesn't affect the neighborhood in negative ways.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, we, we talked about lighting a few, this has been a few years ago now, and I don't know, we never adopted that dark skies initiative, though, did we?
I don't think we did. That would certainly be covered under conditional use permit. If required, one to start with.
Most applications have a condition that said all lights must be facing downward.
Apparently, these do not.
Yeah, apparently.
Right, right. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Cathy Anne Feigenbaum, 1393 Hull Harbor Road, Heathsville, Virginia. I'm here to request that you stop dragging your feet on a solar facility, because we have to look to the future and not to the past. I noticed that tonight's little blurb said that it was .75 in the newspaper when they originally said about this meeting, they said it was going to be one mile. I just wish that you would stop dragging your feet and look to the future, because things are changing, and we should change with it. That's all I have to say.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What kind of things do you have in mind that would speed us along in the process?
I don't understand why you had to go from a half mile to a mile. And then evidently you settled on.
Three quarters.
Three quarters. If you settled on three quarters, my favorite, so.
That's, that's why we have a public hearing.
There have been two other times that we've slowed down, and that's just ridiculous. Solar is the future, it's not the past. We sort of, in Northumberland, we have a tendency to hide in the past. Yes, we like our county, and I understand that. I've lived here 19 years, and I have seen very few changes. And yes, that's good, but with power, it's bad. If we expect, if we would like to look forward to getting some sort of commercial development somewhere in the county, other than the dollar store, because that seems to be the only thing that goes in around here. If we were looking to get a supermarket or something else, we have to be proactive. We need to partner with Dominion. We need them sort of understanding that we want the solar facility, not keep putting up blocks, which is what I think you guys have done. That's where I stand.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Stuart? Any questions?
Is there also a comment about the solar?
Well, I was just asked, but we're gonna get, get to that, and we're gonna have, open the public hearing, and then you have some time. Okay? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. The fun is just beginning before you leave. All right. Okay. Okay. If there are no more comments from the public, let's go to public hearing.
Chairman, would you like to see if there's anybody online that wanted to speak?
Is there anyone online that would like to have something to say? Okay. Would you like to have something to say? Okay. Okay, Stuart.
I'll need to get this out of shape.
I think that couple signed up, but they've already spoken.
While we're waiting, Mr. Parker, could I just say a couple of things that people generally don't know, but there are no current applications for solar power facilities in Northumberland County. The Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission have done the best they can to get this right while that window of opportunity is still there. Secondly, there are all sorts of things going on in the energy industry right now. The most notable of which, something you may have heard of, is modular nuclear generation, which appears to be ready to take off, and has the backing of the large IT companies who recognize that we're going to need a vast increase in electrical power to run the data centers that are being built all over the country.
That's correct.
And it also came up in one of those articles, that 25% of the output of Virginia Power goes to data centers, and that percentage is expected to increase.
Oh, definitely.
So we're, something in some front has got to occur in fairly short order, although I wouldn't say, no. I hope people know that in that industry, 10 years is not considered a long time.
And also, Northumberland just spent a lot of money on improving the internet infrastructure in Northumberland. But the, as more and more people begin to work at home, that consumes a lot of energy.
Yep.
So with that, can we open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. I had Ms. Kathy, but I think she's already spoken, right? She's already spoken. Pam, is, anything else, Pam?
I was just about to, um, I just wanted to, I missed a lot of the meetings, sorry. And I just wanted to know if you were considering that we're now a heritage area, so people are coming here, it'll boost our tourism, so those viewsides become super important along, you know, especially 360 and 200. And I was looking at your map, so I guess you've considered some of that, but I see a lot of white space, and I'm hoping it's not along that, what I call the parkway, as you're coming into Heathsville, that, that viewscape. But I don't know if there, though it's mostly woods anyways. But it is something, the other concern I had is I'm hearing rumblings from the state about counties coming up with these proposals and regulations, and I'm hoping they don't step in, because they don't live here and experience what we experience, but our heritage site is good leverage, so we should keep that in mind, I think.
There is always a political risk that if counties act too independently and start shutting down perceived way forward, that the state is gonna step in.
Right. It's a constitutional.
So we do have to take that into consideration as well.
Right. But we're a national heritage site now, so I think we can use that to our advantage in, in where we decide, you know, solar should be.
So I take it that you're not favorable?
I am, I am. But I'm, I'm more favorable to seeing it on chicken houses and on, you know, dollar store roofs and places that aren't gonna be farm fields. I'm kinda, you know, but I think a farmer should be able to do whatever they want with their farm. I, I know farmers who, that's gonna be their retirement money. So I guess, you know.
When you bring up the heritage area, are you saying that they, they butt heads, or they don't?
I'm saying that, you know, it's, it's a consideration in where we allow solar farms, because the first thing that people see when they come into Northumberland County is all those woods and farm fields, you know? And we've gussied up Calio now, so that's gonna be something nice as well, right? So, I mean, these are the things that we're doing to, and it's attracting people. So they're now having, Lisa Hall's having meetings on how we want this to be, what does this mean that we're a heritage area? What do we want? So do we want solar to be one of the first things that greets people? You know, probably not, or, you know, a data center or whatever. But there, there are many data centers. So the proponent of something small that would work just for us and not everybody. But yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to take baby steps, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anybody online that would like to have something to say concerning this public hearing? Concerning solar energy? Okay. Stuart, you closed the public hearing then, unless, do you have something, okay?
Well, before we did the public hearing, when we opened it, I should've read it, and I apologize, but I'll read it now. Our vision to the Northumberland County Zonine Order, Section 148-155, Solar Energy Facilities, to add a prohibition of utility-scale solar energy facilities within 1.75 miles from tidal waters. The utility-scale solar energy facility applicant, upon request by the Zonine Administrator, may be required to provide documentation by a Virginia licensed engineer, surveyor, or landscape architect, that no part of the utility-scale solar energy facility shall be closer than .75 miles from tidal waters in the county. And I was gonna show the map online as well. So the red area is where if this recommendation from the Planning Commission is passed by the Board of Supervisors, will be, so utility-scale and, utility-scale solar energy facilities will be prohibited. Now, residential, this on your roof, it will not be prohibited in these areas. Ones that are in the small category, less than 15 square feet, will not be prohibited. And the medium ones that are up to five acres, that are primarily for an industry or business that's gonna use the power for themselves and not sell it and make money off it, are not affected by this either. This is only for utility-scale, that is, five acres and larger, solar facilities where the primary use of the power is to sell power and generate profit.
How do we handle Northern Echellectrics' requests?
Well, that's what I wanted to bring that up.
Heidi, are you referring to the letter?
Their comments.
Okay.
That they submitted for this public hearing.
Yes, yes, ma'am. They, they would like to be exempt from this .75 mile buffer from tidal waters. They cite Virginia State Code, and that section of code basically defines electrical cooperatives. Their rationale is that this is, community solar is what they call it, and that the re, the community solar is for people that can afford to put solar on their own roof and would like to purchase renewable energy. And they also say that since they are not for profit, that they should be exempt. I talked with the county administrator, and the board asks us for a mile buffer from tidal waters, and that's because they didn't want it to affect property values. And one that's for profit is gonna affect it just as one, as much as one not for profit. Now, I take their letter and, and under consideration. However, the board asks us for one mile, and we're giving three quarters miles. And then if we say we recommend exempt the Northern Echellectric Cooperative, that's watering it down even further. And you all, you all make the decisions, and you decide what you want to do, but I would recommend that we do not put in the recommendation that we exempt Northern Echellectric Cooperative. The board can do that. I will forward this letter to the board members for their public hearing, and they, they are the ones that make the decisions, and if they feel that is an appropriate thing to do, then whenever you advertise for a public hearing, you can always make it less strict than what you advertise for. strict than what you advertise for. You cannot make it more strict or you have to stop and re-advertise and hold another public hearing, but by exempting an organization, then you would make it less strict. So the board very well may decide that they want to let Northern Eck Electric Cooperative be exempt, but I, I think that's their decision, and I, I, I mean, we noted it, everybody got the, got the public comment letter, and we acknowledge it, but I don't think we should, since the memo came from the board, I think they would be the best per, best entity to address this.
That answers my question, thank you.
But if, if you, you know, you all did what you all would like to do with your recommendation to the board.
I just didn't want it to get ignored, and your answer is it will go to the board when they have their public hearing.
Yes, this, this, I'll forward this to Mr. Tadlock, and he will send it to all the board members, and I will contact Mr. Alwine and tell him what we recommended and be on the up and up, and then if the board wants to take that into consideration and, and make that decision at their public hearing, then, then they can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's always been Northern Eck's position, which they articulated in a, in one of our hearings, that they did not have the wiring capacity for a large-scale solar facility. And I know, I was sort of amused by their letter in, because there's no mention of any, any projects under consideration or in it, in the process that the state requires with Northern Eck. And so in view of that, they are simply, they're basically asking us and the board of supervisors to give them a blank check to build whatever, whatever they want.
They still, they acknowledge they still have to have a conditional use permit?
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
But then why do they need a general exemption from the setbacks for the buffer zone? I don't think, based on what they have told us so far, there will never be, I won't say never, but within the foreseeable future, they're not going to be capable of taking the electricity generated by industrial scale plant in their side of the mountain. And they're not going to invest the money to upgrade their wiring. So I, I was, I would move that we send, I guess, a note to the board of supervisors rejecting their proposed blank check, and perhaps asking the county attorney whether an entity like a real estate developer operating under their Aegis would somehow be protected by virtue of the statutes they have cited. I don't think so, but I could see a situation where somebody builds the plant and then turns around and sells it to Northern Eck or Virginia Power, I mean, the whole plant, as opposed to just the outland. In which case, that plant would be exempt.
Do you think they maybe are thinking about smaller community solar facilities that would maybe serve a dozen homes or, and be less than five acres?
This proposal is only for industrial scale solar farms.
Okay.
So it already exempts those sorts of facilities.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to defend what they've requested because I agree with, with Stuart that we should say no, but I do think what they are doing is exactly what I was talking about at our last meeting, and that is keeping the options open for what may be necessary in the future. You know, whether, you know, Ms. Fegelbaum's comments were, were very interesting in the sense that times are changing, folks, you know, so are we going to keep up with it or not? Now, do we have to keep up? That's, that's, that's a political call, but I think what they are saying at Northern Eck Electric is that they want to keep our options open. They have no plans, you're spot on, and there, there are no facilities to build something like that right now because of the power line situation. I think they're just keep, trying to keep their options open. That being said, I agree, no exemption for them. Now, one point of clarification, maybe it's a point of order actually, he opened his comment by making a motion. It wasn't treated properly as a motion or seconded. What you're suggesting probably should be included in the formal motion from the Planning Commission to the board. It doesn't need to be a separate thing, so I agree with your sentiment.
Well, we are going to be sending up, I assume, the proposed regulation as Stuart has quoted it in the agenda.
We can amend that recommendation to include reference to the, to the Northern Eck.
There probably ought to be a comment section, and if we decide to go the route of amending the, I don't see any real point to amending the proposed regulation as it's written in the agenda.
Completely agree.
I was thinking more in terms of a comment to go forward with the board, to the board addressing this letter from Northern Eck.
So Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification from Stuart here, this is my first time where we've had a public hearing with the intent of making a recommendation. Is that exactly what happens, is at some point during this discussion, somebody recommends the changes to these regulations that we have be directed to the board of supervisors?
Yes, sir.
Simple as that?
That, that makes a motion to recommend to move forward with a three, three quarter mile buffer from tidal waters, prohibition for utility scale solar facilities. Now, I mean, Mr. O'Brien wants to address the letter, I think we just leave it live, let it lie, it addresses it, but you all do what you want to do.
So that being said.
And we could send, I mean, if you wanted to, we could send a memo. That's how we communicate with the board, a memo. Now, the recommendation is tied to the public hearing and the zoning ordinance change. A memo would just be an aside that may be related to it, but it's not, doesn't carry over to the next public hearing.
Wouldn't it be beneficial to at least include that we considered this as a courtesy to Northern Eck Electric?
You don't need to include that in a motion, no.
Pardon me?
You don't need to include that in a motion.
That'll be in the minutes.
Right. As a discussion.
That'll be in the minutes, and they'll see the, on the screen if they look at the Zoom meeting, but whatever y'all want to do, if you want to.
Well, so let's get the ball rolling here. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move the adoption, or that we recommend to the board of supervisors that the regulation be changed as, as written in the public here, public hearing announcement.
Second? Any questions?
Was this the only citizen comment that we got? Mr. Chairman? The only letter we got was from Northern Eck Electric?
Other than the people that spoke tonight. And as the planning commission asked, I sent it to Dominion as well.
I meant to also add that if they undertake the exemption Northern Eck wants, would that also exempt them from the conditional use process? Surely?
They acknowledge it's still under conditional use.
Mr. O'Brien, the, the Virginia code section that they cite here is just the definition of electrical cooperatives.
Correct.
So it, it's just saying that any electrical cooperative would, would, and so there's no code section other than the definition of an electrical cooperative.
The first sentence of the second paragraph of this letter says, "We respectfully request that the commission consider an exemption for solar energy facilities constructed by entities organized pursuant to those statutes."
Right, and the entity that's organized is the cooperative.
That's correct. Does that mean the exemption extends to exempting them from the conditional use permit process? They don't say that one way or the other.
But we're not granting.
The county would have to do that.
Yeah.
And from what I'm reading this, they mentioned nothing about the waterfront residential prohibition either, so what they want is exemption from the three quarter mile buffer.
Right.
Right.
Does that mean they're exempt for all purposes, or does that just mean, you know?
They're not exempt for anything unless the board or the county says you're exempt.
Right, does that mean that they have to go through the conditional use process or not?
Because they're not, they're not exempt, yes, they will.
If they are exempt, will they not?
The county is the only one that can exempt them.
Yes, Stuart, you got two things we're talking about. One, are they exempt from the regulation as stated in the notice contained in the agenda? Secondly, if they're exempt, are they exempt for all purposes?
The only entity that can exempt them is the county, and if the county does not exempt them, they're not exempt from any of the regulations that apply to any.
Correct. What if the, the county decides to exempt them because they're a charity? Does that get them out of the conditional use permit process?
It depends on the language of the exemption.
No, I don't think so. It would be entirely up to the board of supervisors anyway, so.
Right, and I view that as a dangerous side effect of this proposed exemption they're talking about. How broad is the exemption?
But we're not approving it.
I'm, I'm not following.
I think, I think if I was with Northern Eck Co-op in the position that this person that wrote this letter is, from a business standpoint, that's exactly what I would send. Doesn't care what it, not necessarily are they concerned about the county and how many people like it or don't like looking at it or whatever. I think this is something that just gets their foot in the door to, for possibility down the road, being able to.
Keep their options open, yes.
And they want a blank check.
Yep.
But we're not giving it to them.
That's correct, and I think we should recommend that the board of supervisors decline to do that as well.
Have a separate motion after we vote on the one with that before us.
I know, that's why I'm saying there should be a comment to the board of supervisors about that.
All right, so does any other commissioner have a, anything to say concerning the first motion, which is to accept the proposal that Stuart sent us? Any other questions about that? Let's take care of that first. And the motion was to adopt what Stuart said, there was a second?
Yes, it was me.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
Can I change the subject for just a second?
That is, eight, four, and one against.
Two against.
Two against, okay. I'm sorry, didn't see that. Thank you.
I have a question for the lady with the public comment, just a clarification. You mentioned the heritage area. Are you referring to the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail?
No, I'm referring to the Northern Eck National Heritage Area.
Okay, okay, because we have the, there's also a Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail that goes, part of it goes through our county all the way to the end.
The four counties in King George were designated a national heritage area.
Yes, okay.
Not too long ago.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure what you, what you were talking about, okay.
So now, are we also, are you also recommending that we send a note along with this to the board of supervisors to say, "Don't do it"?
Yes, sir.
Saying, okay, is that, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
We recommend that you do not do it, all right?
There are formal motions?
I would move that we recommend to the board of supervisors that they not create an exemption for anybody or any entity under the terms of the proposed regulation.
I had Mr. Haney sitting over there. I know he's listening intently.
And smiling.
Would you, would you weigh in on that with a comment, Mr. Haney?
Whether to, send it to the board or not? Well, actually, what you were requested to do was to look at the ordinance on one mile. You're going to send it to the board as three quarters a mile, so that's okay. All I think I would do with the letter is just include it in the package and let the board decide what they want to do with the letter.
That's good.
And I don't know, I do not know what the board would do. I don't even, I haven't even read it all yet. I just, I just saw it up here and I have not read it yet. I was going to read that later, but I don't know what the board would do, and I, I need to look at the code sections too. I did see the code sections on to it, and I wanted to pull them up.
That's just the definition of, it's just the definition of a co-op.
Just definition of a co-op is what it is, all right, but I also wanted to research anything else on a co-op that's in the code about solar. And, and then we'd have that for all the board members to look at, so I can't pass an opinion on that. If, if you want to send it, send it. It's not going to offend me.
I think we ought to acknowledge that we, we read it.
Yeah, that's what I said. I think that's fair.
Didn't care for it.
Right.
Whether you want to say that or not.
But we did at least review the letter, acknowledge that.
Well, that will be in the minutes, and as the liaison to the board, it would seem to me that he could speak, he's listened to this whole discussion. Your whole point is to be the communicator between the planning commission and the board.
That's correct.
So my recommendation is to not further complicate it. It's going to be in the minutes, and Mr. Haney has an obligation as a liaison to share the discussion if it becomes something that the board is wanting to follow through on.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. O'Brien's motion wasn't seconded.
So it just dies.
Unless it's seconded.
My, my question is, would it be fair to acknowledge Heidi's opinion just to hear what the other side is thinking, because she didn't, didn't vote for it? I mean, her rationale for making.
We had that all in the last month's meeting. I mean, they all heard it.
One, one of the reasons why I voted no was because Mrs. Frerin Baum had already said, "How long are we going to drag our feet on this solar, solar business? Either we're, we're going to be, we can be proactive, okay, but at the rate that we're going now, I wouldn't do anything here." And the reason why I wouldn't is because you don't want nothing, and it's obvious. We spent three, no, we spent five years killing every solar proposal that has come before us. We make it look good, but it dies, and they're still building electric cars, even though it's, even though they have to improve a whole lot, but so did it, so did they with the fossil fuel and gasoline engines. That was, that was a mess, when they dumped millions of gallons of, of gasoline away because they didn't think it was useful. It's a new industry, and what we are continually doing is, we think we're going to live forever. May I remind you that you are not.
You're going to make a motion out of fact.
No, what I'm saying is, if we are a planning commission and we're looking down the road, we're already behind the eight ball. How much more real estate can we buy and sell over and over again? How much more real estate can we buy and sell over and over again? No offense. How many times can you sell the same piece of real estate? And farming is going to be, we are almost 50 years behind the times. I look around, every county around us, and they are utilizing it, they're doing it at a schnail's pace. I look at Richmond County and they're saying, "Hey, I'll build it right on Northumberland Line." What are they going to do, nothing? They might ask to help utilize that. So how long are we going to continue talking, you know, Mrs. Cathy Ferrin said, "We're dragging our feet in the 21st century, and we're an old population." And it just seems like, um, I don't think solar energy is going to go away. And I do believe that artificial intelligence is going to eat up a whole lot of electricity. And our population is, just by accident, somebody opened the back door and more people have snuck into Northumberland County, because I didn't see them coming. So what I'm saying is, is that we're a planning commission, and we have to recommend that, uh, there are so many, there aren't that very many choices with alternative fuel. And the fossil fuel industry is going crazy because they're afraid that they're going to be down. You know, they don't want solar, but yet they're taking advantage of the undercurrent, just like Dominion Energy. They're building solar plants left and right, because they see something coming. So my question to you is, how long are we going to continue to drag this solar energy? I mean, you might as well put a sign up in Calio, right, coming when you get into the county. "We don't want any solar at all."
I mean, I agree. The other issue I had was, there are farm fields that are not being farmed. And yeah, maybe they don't bring in a whole lot of income, but the solar farm does bring in some income to the county, which a field that is not being farmed brings no income into the county.
As a tax base.
The taxes, the real estate taxes. And I just feel like, I agree with Mr. Parker in that we've seen five applications come in, and those individuals spent a lot of money, just like the fellow that wanted to do the meat packing thing. He spent a lot of money to try to get this county to approve or work with them on trying to get these things accomplished in a way that everybody can be happy. And we're just not willing to do that. And I think by extending this from, you know, from the waterfront R2 to the 75 or the three-quarter buffer, I just think it's just, we're just in your face saying, "We do not want you to come." And that's fine, we're all on our way out. But the people coming behind us are not going to have anything to build on, because we've told everybody, we're not interested. So I, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
At the last meeting.
Sorry for those who heard it for the second time.
At the last meeting, there was a motion for one mile, and I voted against that. I actually agree with Mr. Parker and Heidi on this issue. The reason I was willing to go and in fact made the motion to go to 7.75 is it opened up enough white space along the major trunk roads, which is where the transmission lines have to run. So that additional little bit of white space that quarter mile gave us, to me, was the reason I was willing to go along with this. But my other sentiment, though, is completely agree with you. We cannot say no to the future.
I spoke with a fellow last week, Richmond County, and he knew I was on the planning commission, and he was also at Richmond County. Said, "See, you all don't have any solar farms down your way." I said, "No, but it looks like you all got plenty of them." He said, "Yeah." He said, "We're at a point now where we can't stop them." Once we started it, you can't deny somebody if you've already got so many acres of these solar panels up. And he said he wished he had it to do over again. That's just one person, I'm not saying the whole Richmond County feels like that. But most of that is owned by the power companies anyway, I think, most all of that. So that's just, I think you need to be cautious on how fast you move with it, and we're certainly slow enough, but.
Well, to that point.
I'd rather not do something than do it wrong, is my concern. I'm okay with it in certain places.
And I don't disagree with the caution, but from 2019 till today, we've been working on the solar ordinance, and, you know, we have revised it, we have public hearinged it, we have tried to think of a lot of stuff as a result of what happened in Richmond County or Essex County. And quite frankly, I'm very proud of the work we've done on that ordinance. And I think we've all worked really hard on it, and I think we've built it with caution. And we've built in things that we can apply. If we don't like the way the application's coming in, the board of supervisors has unfettered conditional use permitting in the entire ordinance, from small to large. So, and maybe Richmond didn't do as good a job as we did, but we've been working on this thing for five years, and we have every year done at least one or two or three revisions to that ordinance. And I think we've done a great job, and I'm proud of it. And I'm willing to see if we can make it work in this county, and I just, that's where I am on that.
At the last meeting, the board of supervisors asked us for a mile buffer. There was a section of the commission that thought that would be a bad sign to potential businesses and would send the wrong signal to the Western Universe that Northumberland County is anti-business. What happened was, there was a motion for a mile, which I made, that was deadlocked four to four. And I suggested that as a compromise, we should go middle ground, which is three-quarters a mile. Not a half a mile, like some commissioners wanted, but not the mile that the board of supervisors wanted. It's a little late in the game, because of the advertising process, to forget that compromise and say anything other than three-quarters a mile.
He wanted to know why I disagreed.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
The process works. We've had a public hearing, the motion's been made, it's going to the board. I have no problem with the process at all. I was just answering Mr. McKinley's request.
Thank you. All right?
All right. So, Stuart, we're going to send this recommendation to the board with a few notes?
Well, I'm just going to send that we recommend to approve the three-quarter mile buffer, total waters for utility scale solar, because Mr. O'Brien's motion was not seconded.
Okay.
And so there's, that's what I want to say, recommendation.
Okay.
To as advertised.
So we're not going to have any comments at all with regard to the?
They'll get the minutes in the letter.
With the Northern Act elected letter. Is that what the board wants?
Yep, that's what we said, right?
Yeah.
That's what we said. All right, any other comments? About solar energy. Any other comments? All right.
We'll have more opportunities, I'm sure.
I imagine we will.
I'm quite sure, I'm quite sure. Okay, all right, Stuart?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we going to the work session?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Close the public hearing?
We're going to close the public?
Did you close?
Yes. I hope I did. Move it now. Okay?
Okay, chapter four of the comprehensive plan. I believe that I sent you out the comp plan that I had already started making changes to, so you should see the, um, somewhere, there's some red, yeah, there's some red there. And I don't know how you want to go about this, if you'd like to go page to page, if you'd like to start off with Mr. Cost's comments, which I assume everybody got, on individual pages. And I do want to update you that a month ago, contacted VDOT for additional information to update this chapter, and they sent me geographic information system data, and I've created the new functional class map, which really didn't change. I mean, the class of the highway is the class of the highway. We've got local, minor collector, major collector, minor arterial, and other principal arterial. 360 is the other principal arterial, and some of the other, uh, major arterials is 202 and 200. Major collectors are Courthouse Road and Lewisetta Road and Hacksneck Road and things of that nature, and Brown Store and Road down here. And then there, the minor collectors are in yellow, and then the locals are the gray. So that's not really much of a change. But I did get the annual average traffic, daily traffic volume for the updated data, and I just put this together. I haven't gotten it gussied up to be able to fit the complaint yet. Needs a logo and things of that nature. But if you look, and I need to bring up the old one so we can compare the two.
Where is 600 on that map?
600?
Yeah.
Is on the county boundary, which is, uh, it weaves in and out of the county, so the county boundary covers it up, so there's a portion that.
Okay, it is the boundary.
Yes, for the most part. I mean, Crawford's Corner Road is as well, but, yeah, this section right here is Ridge Road. So if you look at the 2014 map, that I've created categories, and so with the new data, I use the same categories, even though we had a, this data only deals with the higher volume roads back when I worked for the planning commission. The new data has it for all the roads. So I'm not sure if I just got that, the dataset I had just had the major roads. So there's a little bit different there, but I wanted to follow the same categories so that when you compare one to the other, you'll be looking at the same thing. So the categories are still 62 to 490. And then I created another category, because we actually have things that are, counts that are higher than 7,726 from last comp plan. And I don't know where the other one went, but the new section, we go, we have a section, a category that goes from 7,726 to 8,424 vehicles a day. And you look at the map, and I made it a black color, so what I was trying to explain is the other categories are the same. The difference in the map is that the other local roads are being shown, and most, majority of them are in the lowest category. And that the highest, this new category above 7,726 vehicles a day is in Calio. If you look from the stoplight to the dairy freeze, that all those segments, and I don't, I don't know how to explain it, are 8,424, except for a lot of people going to Calio and then driving over the sensor, and then driving over the sensor, going to the liquor store, driving over the sensor, going to the pharmacy, driving over the sensor to go to get the mail or whatever. I don't, because usually that happens when you have convergent highways that come together. But there's this section anyway, that that's what the data, I got it straight from VDOT's mouth, so. Anyway, if you're going to locate a business, that might be the place to put it.
Is that the only place in the whole county?
That's over 7,700, was it 7,000?
776.
7,726. That was, that was the upper limit in the 2014, and now it's new data. There's like four segments, and it's all right there. So anyway, I thought you all would find that interesting, I did, and I really don't have an explanation for it.
So there are a lot of people who will drive from, say, the bank to a gas station or from the Dollar Tree and what the other, the other one, to, say, the post office or to the bank. You get a lot of people in that neighborhood who are simply jumping from one parking lot to another.
This isn't going to cause VDOT to want to change that into a six-lane divided highway for Calio.
No, they're putting it on a road diet, just like they did in Warsaw. I don't know if anybody's been through Warsaw in rush hour.
It's terrible, terrible.
I don't even know what's going to happen July 4th.
I hope that makes it better, but they're going from a two-lane to a single lane.
Right.
Four lanes.
They're going from four lanes to two lanes, and they turn to the center. And they're going to do that in Calio and Lutzburg, too. And the other morning, I had to go to an appointment, and I was, it was eight o'clock in the morning, and I was backed up to the chiropractor office going towards Tappahannock, and it took three lights to get through on a Wednesday morning at eight o'clock in the morning. But that doesn't have anything to do with the complaint. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that I'm making progress on the mapping for the chapter, and we'll have brand-new pretty maps for the chapter.
Well done. That's tough stuff getting all that data, so thank you.
With regards to that tabular chap, I'm going to have to glean that from the GIS data, but I guess that's one of the things I wanted to ask, if the traffic count data, do y'all want me to create this, read, whatever, update this, revise this chart? Or do you think the map shows, I mean, do you think we need the chart and the map? Or, I'll be glad to update the chart if that's something y'all like to do, too.
The map is wonderful. I like the map.
I don't think we need a chart.
Yeah, I think you're doing good.
Okay, because I'd have to parse it out, but I mean, I could do that if that's what y'all would like, it's no problem.
I would imagine that chart was originally designed before we had good maps.
Right, right, that was my thought as well.
Get rid of it.
Okay, so delete table four. So would you all like to go through Mr. Cost's notes?
Sure.
Somebody's quickly, since he's already addressing them. I don't think you have my notes.
Yeah, I'm.
I know you do.
I don't know, trying to get this thing resized so I can have both of them on the screen at the same time. Why does it do that? I'm sorry, hold on, bear with me. All right. Okay, so, I understand that you want to reorganize the sections. But I mean, I guess we need to discuss that.
Yeah, so my, in reading through it, it, there were some flow issues, because there were places where there were recommendations, other times there weren't. There were a lot of things that seemed to be scattered all over the place. Good data, to be sure. So what I'm recommending there at the very beginning, or wherever that is up there, is that each section that talks about the major subdivisions in the. is that each section that talks about the major subdivisions in the chapter, start first the discussion around the current assets and situation. What does the current state look like? Where are the opportunities as a planning commission and the county to change things? And then are there specific recommendations? Perhaps there aren't, perhaps the timing isn't right. It would just seem to flow better if we break it into those chunks. And I would be glad to work with you and work and help with that.
I mean, in the previous chapters, we've done revisions, and this is like, this is a... Basically a rewrite, starting from scratch.
And as I said, I'd be glad to help you with it.
And, you know, the track changes is going to look crazy.
It's going to be a mess.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would think we would just have the old and start a new one. But it's up to the planning commission how they want to do. I mean, it's, it can be done, but I don't think we can do it with the track changes. We need to start from scratch. But, and I would, I definitely appreciate your volunteering to help as well. But let's hear from the commission on what they feel.
Anybody else?
Y'all are happy with the status quo? I, I'm not going to...
I don't feel strongly about it either way, but it's a very long, very cumbersome document, and streamlining and reorganizing, it doesn't... We could say that for the whole thing.
I don't have an opinion either way at this point, Tom. I'm the same way.
Vivian, how do you feel?
I'm with everyone else. I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, I like the layout and the format that you recommend, but it's a lot of work. And I mean, what are we... I know we've been working on this thing, and we've got a lot more to go. So do we get the wording right first? Or we'd have to, yeah. Yeah, and then just go back and I call it reformatting? You know, that's a possibility, but...
There was one point that John made that I thought was sort of telling about the, not just about this section, but the document as a whole. There are like six places in chapter four where they talk about bike trails. Wouldn't it make more sense to have that in one section? Yeah, I think it would.
So maybe what we do, Stuart, and I'll throw this to you, is go through the specifics, clean those up, and then if there's an appetite for it, because this thing is such a mess by that time, or less of a mess, that we just figure out what to do.
Okay. I'm not a fan of reformatting, but, you know, I'll do whatever the planning commission wants us to. And I understand it's a little clunky. And with regards to the bike trails, I can give you a little background of that. The county originally had their own bike trails. And at that time, that's when the Potomac Heritage Bicycle Trail came up. And at the advice of the Planning District Commission, we decided to scrap our homemade bike trails and just adopt and take the Potomac Heritage Trail as our bike trails. So that's why it's a little clunky in the bike section, because we, they established this new trail, and they put up signage in the county, and it was, should we go with what we have? Or should we just, part of the regional initiative, try to keep it flowing and go with what had already been established in the work that the planning district commission did? So that's what, that's how we kind of switched gears from our home, home group bike trails to the National Potomac Heritage Trail Bicycle Trail. So that's kind of, that's why it's a little clunky. But as Mr. Bryant said in the past, you know, you edit it, and then you edit it, and then at some point, there's a rewrite. And I can see in the future a rewrite coming. But I, I don't, not sure it's, it's done.
Okay. The next part, then, starts with the word additionally, that last block. I think we need to build on the work we already did as a commission with the surplus property thing, work we did last year. Just add a section on that. It doesn't have to be very long, you can follow that format or not. But I think that there's some valuable information in there, as we've already found with the Hampton Hall discussion, so I think it's worth adding. I don't have specific language yet, I don't think it would be difficult to create, though.
Yeah, I talked with the county administration about, about that. One of the things is we got to figure this plan, hopefully it's going to be good for five years. And we don't want to put something that's going to get dated right away. And a general description, and then the other thing is that the comprehensive plan is a general document. So say if you wanted to put a map showing all the county properties on one, on a countywide map, but we, we talked about, I did think it was appropriate to list every one of the properties, because the board may sell one of them, and then it'll be, the complaint will be out of date.
But that already, in case your transfer, your traffic data is already...
Right, right. Well, I'm updating that. But I would just say that I, a general statement like you mentioned would be fine, but I don't think that we should list all of them and then tell what we want to do with all of them. But the commission, you know, whatever the commission would like to do, we will do.
On the other hand, this document is going to be distributed over the next five years as is or as finished. I see a certain utility in letting the general public know what properties there are in the county that might be for sale or developed.
I agree. That's why I suggested it.
Yeah? So I would prefer to see a listing. And if you, you know, want to add something, you know, for example, under Hampton Hall, you know, it's going to be, in all likelihood, turned into a county park.
Stuart, when you go to the county property cards and you put in Northumberland County, do these parcels come up?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to take the effort and, but you got to search on Northumberland County, then you got to search on County of Northumberland, then you have to search on Board Supervisors, and then Sanitary District and School Board, anyway. There's under many, many different names, but yes, all of them, if you go to the land records, you can, you can search them, but they're not all in one place.
Stuart, you already generated a list of properties.
Yes, sir.
Where did you get, where did that information come from? I mean, that listing is fine with me.
Yeah, exactly.
And that was what I was recommending not to put in. But you all do, if you all want to put those, all those properties in, you can.
Why would you recommend not putting it in?
I think some citizens would say, well, this, this field is owned by the county. I pay taxes, this is my property. I'm going to go out and shoot some deer, or I'm going to go hiking, or I'm going to dump some trash, or I don't know, trespass. But, you know, that's, maybe I'm just pessimistic that people will start...
You are.
Yeah.
Well, if they haven't done it yet, they're not...
Well, if West Virginia moves in, any one of those properties will be in trouble, anyway.
You asked, and I told you so. You all, you all can do whatever you would like to do. I will do whatever you all would like to do.
I would recommend, John, in your, in your capacity for reorganization and rewriting, that we list the properties that are, that are available.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second? Any questions? All in favor? All right.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Next?
Next. The, the long list, page by page goes out. There's a number of places where there's simply suggestions that something needs to be fixed, not necessarily specific language. So the first one, for example, is the first paragraph on page, chapter four, page two, talking about the bottlenecks. And it wasn't clear exactly what bottlenecks we meant. I think we all know what they are, but those are big fix, so that has to be addressed.
The bottlenecks are those portions of 360 that are not four-lane.
Correct. So they're already partially being addressed in Lottsburg and Calio. And, but it's not, we need to clarify what bottlenecks we mean and what's being done. Just recommended changes there.
I kind of have trouble with that wording, because a bottleneck customarily implies a traffic backup.
Exactly.
I don't think we have much in the way of traffic backups are out here. May slow down if there's, you know, somebody changing a tire or whatever, but...
Or farm vehicles.
Yeah, or farm vehicles. But they're, you know...
But they occur at intersections. That's where the, I go to, come out of Remo Road to Wycomico Church at 4:30, I'm the ninth car in line waiting to get on to Route 200. That's a bottleneck, as far as I'm concerned.
Also, Sunday morning, when someone's going to Food Lane after church, and they're going 35 miles an hour down the 360.
Or everybody's favorite, the log truck.
Anyway, so I agree, we should change the word bottleneck and then clarify that paragraph. Stuart, I'll work with you on language if you want. Same page, the third paragraph, there's a reference to a VDOT six-year plan. Is this something we need to be aware of, because it, does it affect us? I mean, I have no idea what that is.
Well, they, they hold a public hearing every year for the board supervisors, and the six-year plan is, is basically what they plan on doing. And I don't know if you know how VDOT works, but the majority of the money, funding goes to urban areas. And we're in the Fredericksburg District, so say 90, well, I don't, I won't show you any statistics. But most of the money goes up Stafford County, Fredericksburg area, things of that nature. And six-year plan, I mean, they fix bridges down here and safety problems and repave and things of that nature. So that's what's in the six-year plan. I mean, it's just basically letting people know there is one.
Okay.
And it doesn't, they're not going to be adding four lanes between...
Okay. That one's fine, let's move on to the next one. So the last paragraph on the page, the clearest picture of which road care the predominant traffic comes from an inspection of the annual data traffic. So that just needs to be updated, and you are updating that, so that's already being done. Page three, first bullet, 4,000 vehicles, I assume that's out of date. You all update that.
Yes.
Last paragraph on that page, whoa, wait a minute, oh, page five, I'm sorry. US 360, it, second sentence says it now has four lanes, except for the segments between Lottsburg. That just needs to be updated for the three, for the three-lane road.
Well, I mean, it's, it's two lanes in Calio, two lanes in Lottsburg, and it will be two lanes in Calio and two lanes in Lottsburg with a turn lane in the middle. I mean, it's not going to affect the flow. Well, I mean, if you all want to put the three-lane addition in there, I'll be glad to put it in there.
Yes.
But the title of section is four-lane primary.
Okay.
And will that go to public here, to a public...
No, they, they've already done that. They had information session so that they could inform the public, and they're going to do it when they repave the pavement.
Any predictions or any idea why that's going to occur?
I believe it's scheduled for next year.
That seems, that seems to be my recollection as well, but what part of next year? Do you recall? Spring, fall?
I would assume in the spring, when it gets warm enough and the pavement will stick. Because they're going to do it, because they got to re-stripe it. And, and Mr. Beal was at the board meeting the other day and explained that they have to re-stripe it like four, four or six different times, because the reflective tape they put down, the pavement doesn't stick to. So then have to mill that and then put paint down. Anyway, it's, yeah. So I would think it would be in the, earliest would probably be in the spring of next year.
So you said this is four-lane highway section, that's right, except the word accepted appears at the beginning of the third line, so this is about the exception. So that does need to be updated, and other than that, that's fine. My next point is on section, page 11, and this goes to what Patrick was talking about, about bicycle lanes. These need to be brought together in some, they can all be brought together in this place since it's called Northumberland County Bicycle Facilities Plan. But let's take it out of the other places where it should be here instead. Follow?
Yeah.
Okay. Page 14. Following. This is all against the restructuring. Let's see, page 16, last paragraph. "One behold, that might increase tourism and recreational opportunity would be established as sufficient number of canoe kayak launching facilities." That needs to be updated, because we have, and we have more plans. So there's, just update that, to say that we're doing that.
I'm having problems because my page, pagination is different.
Change, so it's under Northumberland County Public Water Access, the fourth paragraph.
Okay. All right, so that's first, second. Well, I put in here that continued work of the county with the assistance of county staff, worked on VDOT to obtain a VDOT landing. Anyway, I added the pier underneath the Grand Wycomico and Hampton Hall here.
Good. That's exactly what I was talking about. So then go down to the paragraph after one that's there. And there's a number of things that could be modified at the beginning of this paragraph to coincide with what you just said. This basically ignores all that.
Okay.
For purposes of good public relations, there ought to be someplace in there where we can add to the ones that are exclusively boat launches that people use the county piers for kayaking and actually small canoeing and small boating launches as well.
Especially those that have a boat ramp. Pardon me? I said especially those that already have a boat ramp.
Yeah. Yeah. Speaking of which, if we go down to the next item, then which is two paragraphs further down, the four planned improvements that we've updated. So the paragraph that starts right there at the top, four planned improvements.
Yeah, that, that was when we were, if you recall, the grant we put together for the Jesse Ball de Pont, were those particular landings.
Okay.
Cooper's Landing, uh...
My only point is that the, the status needs to be updated. It says four planned update, or four planned improvements. And you talk about that, you're, you're updating that already. That's exactly what I was looking for. Page 419, the YMCA. Probably need to make some reference to the planned or hoped-for dome.
Or the swimming pool.
Right, correct.
Yep.
Okay. Next paragraph's about golf courses. I would just clarify after the word "two" at the beginning that those are privately owned courses, so people don't get to think that we have public courses here.
Well, one is public and one is private.
But it's not, not publicly, it's not a government-owned facility.
It's not a municipal...
Right.
Right. Well, I mean, yeah, we can put it in privately owned.
Exactly, it's all...
But if you're going to put that in, I think you ought to put in that Quentin Oaks is a public course and Indian Creek is a private course.
Yeah, reference Indian Creek is private.
What's the other golf course?
And Quentin Oaks.
Quentin Oak.
Public, private.
No, I know about Quentin Oaks, what's the other golf course?
Indian Creek, Yacht and Country Club.
Yeah, I mean, that...
Private as it gets.
But you can't just...
What I'm wondering, though, is if that is, that's actually in Lancaster County, isn't it?
Nope, it's in Northumberland.
Entirely?
Stuart, you get the point, so...
Probably will be.
Okay, great. We're really blind here, folks, if we stay on track for a minute, get out of here. Next chap, next paragraphs, conclusions and recommendations.
What page are you on, John?
The bottom of page 19.
Okay.
I think it's two pages of that, I think I've gone two pages before, so...
There, right there. So it should be conclusions and recommendations, because you actually have recommendations in this section. And then I had comments in there about surplus land, but again, we're talking about that separately. And then the paragraph that starts at Vermar Beach, what does my notes say here? "Should we reference the proposed park and the library?" Was anything done with the recommendation about Vermar Beach that's in there? And should we reference the proposed park at the library?
Yes, at Vermar Beach... Yes, at Vermar Beach, there was tourism funding that we received through the Tourism Commission, the Northern Eck Tourism Commission. And there, we, this last year, we tried, we were planning on doing improvements to the parking lot and adding picnic tables. And there's a, there's a walkway that goes over the riprap and add railing to that. However, the money ran out and we used majority of that money for the kayak launch at Lodge Landing. So there wasn't money to improve Vermar Beach, but we still want to improve Vermar Beach. But there has been no progress as of yet. But it is on the radar screen and it's something that if we can find the money, we will, we will be doing that, so.
It just needs to be updated then.
Right.
The next section, I have page 22, but it's where we talk about basketball, which is.
Yes, sir.
The general standard is every, one court per 500 to 1,000 people. What do we have, how many courts, how many basketball courts do we have?
Only thing we have is at the schools.
Okay.
So I mean, that's something that they say that.
YMCA has it.
Okay.
It's one per half million?
One per 1,000.
Oh, 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 that's a nine hundred thousand.
500 to 1,000 persons.
Yeah, so we need at least 12, we've got some work to do there. Anyway, you just may want to state that we only have, currently have two or whatever the number is.
Well, I, I don't personally know how many are at the schools, so I'll have to research that.
Yeah, they probably wanted the elementary school too.
And the baseball, softball too. And the one, two, three, fourth line says, "The major difference is that softball requires a little longer pitching distance and longer outfield." That needs to say baseball. Baseball field is.
Good point.
I didn't catch that until right now.
I'm sorry, you said it needs to be struck?
No, just.
I'm reading it, I got it. The major difference softball requires a little longer.
Yeah, then it should be softball.
Softball, baseball.
Oh, okay. Yeah, softball requires you get less, all right.
So we got the basketball one, then the next one is on tennis. There's a recommendation in there, what was done, if anything, with that recommendation?
As far as I know, there, there are no public tennis courts in Northumberland County.
Probably should say that.
And I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there are any at the YMCA. And they're not at the high school. But Indian Creek had some, but you got to be a member.
Sherwood Forest has. Yeah, one, Mallard Bay has two.
But if, I don't think we want to be listing things that aren't public.
Right.
Right, okay. So, yeah, we'll state there are no tennis, currently no tennis court, public tennis courts.
And then update the swimming pool one too, is there a status change on that? I don't know if there is or not.
You can say several HOAs have private tennis courts, I mean, you could put that in there, not naming them.
Doesn't the Lions Club or whatever is on Lodge Road have a bunch of tennis courts?
No, that's the Rubik's, that's just softball fields, is all that is.
I thought before you got there. The next part is on page 23, that was the reference under administrative offices. There's a reference to the library in here, and then there's a whole section, oh, I'm sorry, no, no, it's on.
I've got it here.
In section two, actually, the Northumberland County Public Library located, that's, but then there's a library section later on.
Right, this first paragraph, in, in my, in my interpretation, is more of a available meeting locations, public meeting locations in the county. And so the library has a public meeting room, Fishman Museum, and Northern Eck Fire Museum, and Hewitt's Tavern also offer meeting spaces, that's the way I take it.
Okay.
But we can, we can massage that if you'd like to.
Say what you just did in a new opening paragraph.
Right, and I think, and I think in that paragraph as well, we should add Northern Eck Community Center.
There you go.
We also should not overlook the high school.
Well, I don't know how easy it is to get that for a public use.
Stuart, the sheriff's office also has a public meeting room in the training area that people can sign up for.
Okay.
And by the way, everywhere else in the document, the phrase is Northumberland County Public Library. The word county is omitted here, only here.
It's, the name of the library is Northumberland Public Library.
Okay. If we had changed it everywhere else then.
Why did they ask me to write checks to say Northumberland County Public Library?
Well, I went on the internet and I Googled Northumberland Public Library and the website came up and it says Northumberland Public Library and the header says Northumberland Public Library.
Okay, if you saw the internet, it must be true.
Again, the whole library discussion, just as with the bike section, should probably be consolidated too. But then let's skip on to water supply and sewage. Why is that here and not in chapter one?
Water supply, I don't know, but sewage is a public service, this is a public facilities chapter. So wa, the, I don't know about the water supply while we talk about the aquifer here. But I do know that sewage is a public facility.
Okay.
And services, and that's the title of the, the chapter.
Fair enough, that helps, okay. And then speaking of sewage disposal, which starts on page 31, number two sewage disposal. There's a number of things in here where there should be a status update. The third paragraph talks about Fleaton Community and then the Indian Creek Community. Those probably need to be updated in terms of volumes and so forth.
Well, the Fleaton Community was the last addition to the Reedville Treatment Plant and Indian Creek was a, there, there was discussion on trying to get sewer there, but the numbers don't work, just like most other portions in the county. The density's not there and you can't service alone with the number of connections you have. And the distance between the connections is too far and basically we're spread out too far to make it work.
One thing that I think that would be helpful in here too, probably at the beginning, I had question, I have this question and will come up again when we do the budget stuff next year, is are, are these sewage disposal facilities financially self-sufficient? And if not, how were they subsidized? I don't need an answer to that now, I think it's.
Well, I will, I will say that they're not self-sufficient and.
But they're supposed to be, right?
Well, from what I understand, I've had this discussion with the county administrator every time we have a capital improvement plan, is that most counties have water and sewer. And the county, or municipalities have a water and sewer system. And the water system makes money where the sewer system loses money and they balance out. Since we don't have any public water system, we just lose out and.
Where's the county's water system?
County has no water system.
You said it makes money.
I said in other localities.
In general.
That's, that's what helps offset.
So my recommendation is we save stuff to that effect in here so that it's clear. We don't just randomly build this stuff. This is a challenge, it's a financial challenge, and that's why we haven't expanded. So I think if you all agree, we should be a little bit clearer about the financial stability of this thing, which is not very good in my opinion.
No infrastructure.
Exactly, I get, I get that, absolutely. Are these waste disposal, where is this waste disposal? Oh, here, on 4.7. Are these waste disposal facilities financially self-sufficient? If not, why not, how are they subsidized? Yeah, okay, I got all that already, almost there. Page 37, first whole paragraph. That's at the end of solid waste services section, Stuart. We've had a lot of discussion politically lately at the Board of Supervisors around the issue of non-residents using the solid waste disposal. We have to have some discussion about that in here as well.
Do we? Because as I understand it, that whole issue is completely up, up in the air on the, at the Board of Supervisors.
Hasn't been decided on yet.
Understood, and we need to say we have a problem and it has to be addressed. Because the growth in the use of solid waste facilities is growing far faster than expected. And we need to either add more, we certainly have to pay for more, so I think that needs to be mentioned in here.
Well, until it's resolved by the board, I, I, they may choose not to do anything. And I'm not sure it's been documented exactly how, how much other counties are using it. But it's, I mean, if the planning commission wants to do it, I, I don't want to step on the board's toes because they may decide not to do anything about it.
That's their prerogative. It doesn't solve the fact that there's a problem though. So a comprehensive plan needs, we're talking about status quo and what changes we need to make. So just having that on the table, I think is a good thing.
Does the rest of the planning commission agree?
What happened to the use of county stickers and all that that they used to do?
Well, that was, that was how we enforced it before.
That's one of, that's one of the things that the board is currently considering as of. Way to do this and that basically is a.
Maybe that will get, this all will get resolved, I don't think it will.
I can't believe it's that big a problem.
Well, by the time we finish working on the whole thing, it very well could.
Yeah, so let's, let's put it in there now and see what happens, update it as we get there, in my opinion. On page, at the end of section four, emergency preparedness, there's recommendations after Hurricane Isabel. What was, what's the status of those recommendations?
What page are you on, John?
Four, four dash 38.
Okay.
On, on the copy I sent y'all, you're on the original copy, okay.
Yeah.
As I say, it's on 39 on the one that I've modified. There's a, there's a document called Lessons Learned. And basically, these are the recommendations from that lessons learned document.
Okay, so what's the status of the recommendation?
That we should follow, improve communication, I mean, improve communication between all emergency services organizations and between intergovernmental entities.
Alan, have we done that?
They're working on the radio system right now.
That's good to know, great.
And.
Radio systems, we have trainings with EMS.
Okay, good.
Not, not infrequently.
My, my point is, is that we've got recommendations, we need to make sure that the status of them is, know what's going on. Otherwise, this thing will even be more outdated.
The power, emergency generators, all those are there. I can't speak to the shelters, but I do know that they use the school, they've used.
So you just want a status update on what has been done?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, I can't answer that, I mean, I, I have to talk with the county administrator and, and. But I do know the communications has been addressed. I know that the county knows who has forklifts to be able to unload tractor trailers full of water and things of that nature. But we can update that section.
Good. Right below that, I didn't actually write this in here, on number five, educational facilities makes reference to a gift, gifted to James Madison. Is there anything we need to update that, is that even relevant in here?
I do know down on Galway Road, they own a house and, and I actually went down and spoke to some students one time when they were studying erosion and environmental things. But as far as a large presence and them creating a research facility, I don't know of anything being planned, so. That was, there, there was a, for your information, there was a planned unit development that was proposed for that whole section of Love Point down. And it was basically, it went through a lot, a lot of discussions and a lot of money was spent. And then eventually they, they dropped their application on that.
Okay.
Then they gifted it to James, majority of land to give to James Madison University. So it was relatively new when the comp plan was redone. And there was a hope that we would get a VMS-type thing here, but that's really, doesn't seem to come to fruition.
So do we need to say anything in section five to update that?
I mean, as far as I know, it's still being used by students and it is a field laboratory, but it's not a large facility. I, I wouldn't say we could leave it in there, but if we want to take it out, I think it'd be a big problem.
I just wonder what it would.
Take it out on test.
Then next page, this is there, should be some reference explaining the role of VCU in Northumberland County being inserted. It's already, VCU's not even mentioned in that paragraph right now. And clearly, they are growing their presence here.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you want to, we can add something about.
Absolutely, it's important, I think.
I mean, I know there's one in, in Calio, is there one in Burgess or?
No, Calio.
Yeah.
Calio.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's it.
And I think Riverside now is the hospital in Tappahannock.
Right, right, right.
Since it's really our hospital, it's a good thing to know. Or a hospital we use, okay. And then on page 42, there's a whole section on social services. I think most of it should be dropped. Most of those are federal and state programs. I think if there's anything that we should focus on would be the stuff that the county specifically does. Because, I mean, I used to be a welfare administrator, I used to be the Department of Social Services Director for the state of Michigan. And it's all well and good, but this is state stuff. And I don't know if there's any value in having it here because it's not really a state facility. These are programs, these are social services programs. So I don't think this stuff is relevant because it doesn't distinguish in any way Northumberland County or should focus on only those things that distinguish Northumberland County from other counties, in my opinion.
If I don't hear anything from the rest of the planning commission, I'm going to assume y'all agree with what he, what Mr. Cost was saying.
Makes sense. We'll let you know.
Yeah. Okay, and that's how it was, that's how it was rolling, so that's good. But I, I understand, and like you said, we can just put the website and then people can, can search for their own.
Exactly.
I mean, I, I agree with your synopsis of listing all the programs so that they will know that they're available so that they can search it. But that could definitely be condensed into a much smaller section.
It seems pretty off point.
Exactly, yeah. And then finally, there's a whole section on housing, but we don't have, why is this under public facilities? These are, we don't own, government doesn't own housing here, that I'm aware of.
I mean, I, I can't, I can't answer that, but I do know that workforce housing is important. And if we're going to have more people that can be deputies and teachers and things of that nature, they're going to need a place to live. So, I mean, I, I can't, I don't have any background to understand why this was put in this section. I don't know what other section of the comp plan it would be in, but.
Well, maybe an opening paragraph that says, "Northumberland County does not own any housing."
Okay.
"But we do have a housing challenge." And then maybe the rest of this becomes relevant at that point.
When I read that, I thought it was basically a reference to 8A housing, which is basically dying out. If it's not completely done already.
Section 8 housing, you mean?
Pardon me?
Section 8 housing?
Yes, yeah. I don't know of any of section 8 housing units in this county.
How about down in Reedville?
Pardon me?
How about in Reedville?
Don't know of any.
There, there are a lot of land.
The first, first road on the left after you pass Blackberry, the section down there, that's subsidized.
It seems to me that it should be in the comp plan because it is an issue for the county. And I think when the Board of Supervisors has to make decisions like they did recently on getting some affordable housing in Calio, they can refer, it's part of our plan to accommodate those kinds of requests because it is a need.
I, I think we should leave it in there, but I think a first sentence that Mr. Cost proposed that, that we don't own any housing, but we do have a problem with housing and.
Something that says, so the board can say, "We should approve this because."
Right, right.
Good, we're good. That's it, thank you for bearing with me.
Stuart, is that the end of that?
I'm sorry?
Is that the end of that section?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Cost and I will work on this and bring you something back hopefully next meeting. Then, then we can decide where we need to go from there.
Okay.
Now, I know it's getting late, but I would like to just talk a little bit about Hampton Hall.
Sure.
At the last Board of Supervisor meeting, I went and gave, gave, well, I given them memo, the memo earlier. I also gave them memo on the cargo containers and they, they accepted that. And then with Hampton Hall Landing, they, they also concurred that we should clear the road and took our recommendation, recommendation of going to clear the vegetation for the road so that we can get the process moving. so that we can get the process moving on building the road in there. I explained to them that we haven't really decided what type of exactly water access we're gonna have, whether we have a fishing pier, canoe kayak launch, or whatever we want to put there. But initially, we want to get the road in there and a couple of picnic tables, and people can launch their kayak from the bank if they want to, or fish from the bank, or just look at the water. And the main thing is to get the road in there, and then we can do other grant funding to, to try to get water access there. So the good news is that we'll be clearing that road soon. They also, when I visited the site, there's, there's been illegal dumping down there. There, it's not recent, it's a long time ago, but there's a bunch of bottles and refrigerators and gas, air conditioners and things like that about, almost close to the water, but, but back pretty far. So as part of cleaning up the vegetation, they're also gonna take the trash out. The road pretty much goes on the edge of the marsh, and the marsh is on the right-hand side. I've got photos, if you want to look at them.
Sure.
Before it's cleared, and then once, once it's cleared, of course, we'll, we'll take a trip down there. But this is, this is starting at the water and coming back. So this is the view, the marsh is on the right-hand side here, and this is the view of Hampton Hall Creek. So this is downstream, and we go another picture. And this is to the left of that, that I just viewed, and this is to the right of the view, and it's a little bit further back. There's remnants of old pilings there, and I talked with the zoning administrator, Wetland guy, he wasn't sure, I don't know if those are just, he thought it was bulkhead.
Looks like a bulkhead.
Yeah, and I, I was like, well, I can't, I think it's the war from a hundred and fifty years ago. I believe that would have rotted away a long time ago, but anyways, there's some stabs there that we may have to pull up once we get to the water access.
What kind of beach or shoreline is it? Is it mud?
It's mud, it's mud.
You sink down in it when you step in it?
I didn't get that far, but yeah. If you, if you look right here, you can see there's a, if, when you go across Hampton Hall Bridge, you'll see the Crab Shedd and Pier on Westmoreland County. So this side, other side of the creek is Westmoreland County, and.
How long is the shoreline?
How long? I did not measure the shoreline.
Roughly. Guess, guess to me.
I mean, all the way around the bridge? I mean.
No, when you're on the bridge, and you're looking down the river, stuff on the right is part of Hampton Hall Landing.
Yeah.
Hundred feet, two hundred.
I would say it's two hundred and fifty feet, if not more.
Okay.
But it's all, it's all covered in vegetation, and you can't get to it unless you're in a boat.
The reason I'm asking, Stuart, is there's, if we take care of the property properly, there would be room for boat landings and fishing piers as well, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
There is not a lot of water depth.
Yeah, you're seeing it, it's not even two feet, I guess.
Barely. If you see, there's a submerged log, log here, so I would say it's about a foot deep there. This was low tide, because you can see the beach, so you need to go at high tide. This is coming back, and you'll see some of the trash. There's, I don't know, air conditioner there.
Do we own all the way to the bridge?
I'm sorry?
Do we own all the way back to the road?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
It's one, it's two point seven nine acres, but about one point three of it is marsh on the right-hand side. So we own a little bit of marsh. And when you come downhill, there's two, from the entrance where the guardrail cut, there's two telephone poles, and we own from the second telephone pole at an angle coming up through the marsh.
I just measured it on OnX. It looks like it's about a hundred and twenty feet of frontage.
And so there's bottles and cans and things of that nature, a boombox, and more trash, and refrigerator, and a dead tree, and then you keep moving back, a gas tank. And this is the marsh on the right-hand side, and there's the marsh as well. I mean, when we clear that, I think you'll be able to look out over the marsh as well. There's a cleared, cleared area, and there's my thumb. There's a little cleared area, it's like, it's really tight, and then it opens up a little bit, and then it gets vegetative again, but they're gonna do a twenty-foot wide path, but, and you go all the way out, and there's a little hole that I cut to get, get in there. Before, you couldn't even tell there was anything there. So anyway, that, that's a quick, a quick view of what we got. It, when we get it cleared, we'll take a trip down there. The board wanted to control access once they clear it, because they're worried about people going down there and putting more trash. So they're gonna put up a gate or a chain or something, so that once they clear it, that, and a no trespassing sign, so we won't have people, hopefully we won't have to clean up trash down there.
When you clear along the shoreline, you gonna have a problem with removing vegetation?
I don't think so. It's a water-dependent use. So, I mean, I, I don't know what the board wants to do, but I would think eventually we want to clear the whole thing, but let's get a road in there and decide.
I'm talking about as far as legally.
If, I mean, if we want to promote bank fishing there, which I, I recall many people would be fishing there at Hampton Hall, then we would need to clear along the bank, so you could cast a line, so. I would think we want to leave some of the bigger shade trees. I don't think we want to cut all the trees off, but clean the underbrush, so that you can actually explore and, and see the shoreline and things of that nature. But the, the thought was we'd put most amenities at the end of the road, but, you know, we can rethink the plan once we get it cleared, and, and if you want to spread it along the shoreline, that's something we can talk about as well. But that's all I got for you.
Stuart, has anybody thrown any numbers out as to what it would cost to do a, a nice area there with a fishing pier and that sort of thing?
Haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
But recreational fishery advisory board is the, the management association of the Saltwater Recreational Fishing Fund, which is a portion of everybody's junior saltwater license. We were able to apply for grant money for that for the fishing pier.
Okay.
And that's where we would like to go back.
That'll still be available.
And ask, ask for funding, once we get to that point, once we decide what type of water access we want to have.
Right.
And they like to have a little bit of match, so we'll have to probably put up some money, or maybe we can leverage some other funding or access authority funds to do that. But that, that's, that's what we hope to be able to do, so we don't have to put the entire bill. The other thing I pointed out at the board meeting is that the Hampton Hall, I think I've told y'all, the Hampton Hall Landing is in the Virginia Outdoors Plan. When I was at the Planning District Commission, I put it in there.
Good.
So it's in, if you look kind of the PDC seventeen section, it says water access at Hampton Hall Landing. So that leverages us, because the VDOT road program has to be approved by VDOT, I'm sorry, by DCR, because VDOT refers to VCR, whether it would be an act, an amenity or needed asset in the region. So they refer to DCR in order to fund the road. If DCR says it's a, it would be an asset and a great recreational facility, and there's a need in that area, then they will fund the road construction, and that's what we're.
Is the closest one at Lodge Landing?
Uh, yeah, Lodge, and there is a public, not many people know this, there is a public landing in Kinsale. The small right-of-way that goes and snakes down behind some houses and goes down to the water on the east side of the granary.
Okay, that's in Westmoreland County.
Yes, in Westmoreland, and there's no boat ramp, but there is a pier. So there could be a water trail from Hampton Hall over there, if we wanted to work with our neighbors.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, will we adjourn?
Second.
Third.